Tonight's on-target presentation will be made by a number of presenters concerning the proposed November 2023 bond election. First up is Robert Arsimal with LAN, the district program management firm, to review the proposed construction projects and additional funds that are needed.
Just for note in the future, I like coming after that. Board members, Ms. Patterson, thank you again tonight. Beginning the presentation for the bond election. So as we all know, Crosby community is continuing to grow. And as the community grows, so must Crosby ISD. To address current and future growth needs within Crosby ISD, the construction committee recommended three projects: a high school addition project, a new middle school phase one project, and a new elementary school project. And in the spring, with approval from the board, we moved forward with the high school addition project. It's currently in zone phase. Tonight, we'll be looking at two projects, two remaining projects recommended by the committee, the new middle school phase one and the new elementary school. First up, we have the middle school phase one. This project will last for two and a half years. It will cost the estimated $55.2 million, which includes land acquisition. It has a student capacity of 600 students, and the core of the campus will be designed for a 1,200 student capacity. The core of the campus includes gymnasium, cafeteria, kitchen, library. What this does is allow us the school district to address any future growth with only adding instructional... instructional... Instructional space, I'm sorry. So it only includes instructional spaces, which would be a middle school phase two project. It reduces the cost in the phase two portion of the project. Next, we'll look at elementary school number six. This project will last two years, estimated project cost of $52.5 million. And it also includes land acquisition. The student capacity for this elementary school is 750 students, and they will address projected growth within the school district for elementary school age students until 2021. And next, we'll look at the status of our bond funds. In 2017, the community approved $109.5 million in bond funds. The school district has completed $20.1 million in renovations and infrastructure upgrades. And with the approval of the school board, we move forward with the high school addition as part of the 2017 funds with an estimated cost of $43.9 million. That leaves us with $45.5 million remaining from the 2017 bond. And with the committee recommendations of the two future projects, middle school phase one at estimated cost of $55.2 billion, and the elementary school at $52.5, we have a total future cost of $107.7 million. If we use the remaining $45.5 million from the 2017 bond, we have approximately $62.1 million of delta, which will be needed to fund future projects.
Yes? On these slides, what you're talking capacity, you're talking optimal capacity or building capacity?
That's functional capacity.
Functional capacity. There will be several presenters that probably would work best if we at the end of their presentation ask them just for their please.
Okay, next, I will present Brian Grubbs. He is with Samco Capital Markets. They are with our financial advisory firm, and he will touch on a financial presentation related to this bond, potential bond election.
Thank you, members of the board. Ms. Patterson, I appreciate it. Again, my partner and I, Doug Witt, have represented the school district as your financial advisor on all bond programs, bond refinancing for a number of years. I do have a few pieces of information as it relates to the financing aspect of the election. So with that, let's start here with a chart, which is essentially, as your financial advisor, our roadmap for building this scenario that we can then communicate to you and to your community, the tax impact of supporting the election. This chart is a look at your taxable value, your tax rate history, going back to 2013, 14, to the far top left. Column two is our most important figure in building your bond model, and that is a look at your tax base. If we go back to 2013, 14, you had a total taxable value of just under $1.3 billion. If you follow that column down, all the way down to the red figure, you'll see a number of $2,875. That is our baseline for purposes of building the assumption that is going to allow you to go to the voters and, if approved, sell those bonds and pay for not only the new debt service on the bonds, but all of your outstanding bonds, and do so without raising the INSS tax rate, which is under column seven at its current level of 48 cents. Now, one thing I want to point out, if you look at the taxable value growth historically under column three, you'll see there in red a figure of just over $540 million. The prior year, you grew at a little over $420 million. And then the three previous years prior to that, we were around anywhere from $175 to $190 million. Our scenario that we're looking at that proves up your ability to take on the additional bonds and do so at the same INSS tax rate assumes taxable value growth going forward of $150 million per year for four years. So substantially less than what you've grown the last two years, and even less than what you grew fiscal year 2020 through 2022. The factors that we go into building our bond capacity model is not only we look at the types of projects and assets that we're financing, we look at the tax base level that we just spoke about. We look at issuing the bonds over a period of time, whether we do so all in the summer following the election, or we space this out and sell these bonds based on the timing of the construction, our interest rate levels, as well as state law. So here's a summary of the actual scenario itself. We are assuming the bond election is held in November 2023. As you know, school districts are given only two opportunities to be presented to the voters, and that is May and November of each year. We are assuming that if approved in November, that these bonds would be sold in one installment, which we believe is a conservative assumption. Typically, districts that voters approve their bonds in November typically sell those bonds in January, February of the following year. We're also assuming an interest rate of 5%. Currently, school districts throughout the summer have been selling bonds in at around 4.25%, 4.35%. So we believe that is also another conservative assumption because we're talking today about considering calling for an election that won't be approved until November for bonds that won't be sold until January or February of 2024. We do have a 30-year payback term where we will be paying back principal in every year, just like we have historically done for the district. Even though the debt service is paid for over a 30-year period, you do have a 10-year call date or optional redemption feature that gives you the ability that once we get to the 10th year, you have the ability to refinance, just like you would a home mortgage and you have done in this district, and/or to the extent there's excess, begin to paying back portions of the principal when we get to that 10th year. The debt service will be, and I'll show you here in a moment, structured around your existing debt service. And we did speak about our most important assumption, other than our interest rate, and that is the conservative nature of our tax-based assumption, assuming that you only grow at $150 million per year for the next four years with no growth thereafter. When we put together all those assumptions, we build your plan of finance, we are communicating that it will not require the district to raise the INSS tax rate to support the debt service on this new bond. This is a graphical representation of the debt service, including the new bonds. So the dark blue columns represent your existing debt service. Maybe a little hard to point out, but if you'll notice to the far left, your peak bond debt service payment, your highest bond payment, is going into this 2324 fiscal year, that largest dark blue bar. And then by design, when we sold your last series of bonds, we actually built in a drop off. That's about a million-dollar drop off in the following year, and we made it level thereafter, knowing full well that you may have to come back to your voters to take on new bonds. So by design, we're still trying to maintain that level debt service profile with drops in the future, but taking on not only your outstanding, but the new debt service there in yellow, you could do so under the same INSS tax rate. And then my last slide is just a reminder. Historically, when you... A little change from this election from previous, and that is the legislature now requires all Texas schools, no matter if it's a 50-cent INSS tax rate increase or if it's a no tax rate increase, that on the ballot, it states that this is a property tax increase. There is nothing any school district can do about it. It has to read that way in the legal document, be a order that would be considered being adopted, as well as the ballot. Now, for our school districts that call for these elections, and specifically in your case, where there is not going to be a tax rate increase, the communication part of this is key once you call for the election, and just making sure the voters know that the INSS tax rate is staying the same. And we have districts that in their voter information material speak to the fact that they're required to make this statement in the ballot language. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have for me this evening. Thank you.
Okay, during this past summer, we actually completed a demographic study. So tonight, we have Chris Poole, director of planning, Angela Fritz, demographer, and Tiffany Thomas Rogers, director of operations. So I will now turn it over to Ms. Poole and Ms. Fritz.
Good evening. Like Ms. Johnson said, we're with population survey analysts, and we completed a demographic study for the district about the end of the spring. And we've been asked to give just a very brief overview of some of our findings. Just a couple of words about how we go about our process and the major things that we do are we get a download of student data from the district, and we geocode all the kids so they pop up like little dots on the map with their latitude, longitude coordinates. We go in and we study the future housing parcel by parcel. We also ascertain the ratio of students per home or the yield of students in every new home and every existing home. And then we provide several scenarios of growth for the district. We're going to hop straight in this evening and look at just an overview of the housing numbers. And this is really just to kind of scale it down, let's look at the most impact that impacts will see first for those developments that are kind of on the ground now. These are the housing occupancies. They go for the first five years of the projection period, but now they're for your next four unschool years, and these are just new housing occupancies. These are not students for the reason that Chris explained earlier about students for occupied home. So this map looks at a total of just over 3,000 new occupancies projected in the next five years that are within these developments that are depicted here on this map. 80% of the 4,000 total single-family and multifamily homes that are projected in the first five years of this study. And you can see that these are geographically spread across the district, starting in the far northwest. We have almost 800 occupancies projected in Indian Springs, Sundance Cove, and Sonova. Just a point, when we did this study, the land for Sonova had not actually closed yet. Got here a little early this evening and drove up there, and there's actually dirt turning already on that development. So just a heads up on that. In kind of the central district area, the FM2100 corridor, we have just over 1,400 occupancies projected. That's in Newport Point and Crosby Farms, and then the Preserve at Newport, Newport as well. Kind of to the eastern portion of the district, which is New, we have about 400 occupancies projected in Cedar Point by Ashton Woods and also Piney Woods, manufactured hump community. And then to the south, you have two large developments that are projected also along Crosby Lynchburg in 1942, and Sweetgrass Village and Barrett Crossing, which have a total of just over, my eyes are not good enough to read that far away, 500 occupancies for your first five years. So in total, this is what your new housing projections look like over the 10-year period. We have just over 10,000 or just under 10,000 single-family projected, and that's, you see that scaling up from the remainder of this previous year that just finished up until about year five of the projection period, when all the major developments we talked about that are kind of on the map now really ramp up and get going. Can hand it back over to Chris.
Will you repeat the number that you just said?
There, in total, there's 11,589, and there's just over 9,700 single-family occupancies. Okay, just a second ago, I mentioned that we developed a student yield for each one of those homes, and this is a district-wide average. Probably if I asked you, you would say two kiddos per home. And that may sort of be the case, but not everybody is in that same life cycle at the same time. I've got a junior at A&amp;M, I've got a senior in high school, I'm about to count to zero, and you'll have that too, guys. And so when we look at it as an average, it's a .51 right now per single-family home and a .49 for multifamily homes. Now, if the district with all these new developments coming in ends up looking more like a lot of the suburban districts in the Houston area, and we really work for a ton of the districts in the Houston area, I would expect that single-family number to go up a little bit. Some of the highest we see are pushing .8 as an average. And then I might expect the multifamily actually to come down a little bit. You don't have enough multifamily units. It can get skewed and, you know, just about a few different numbers there. But like I say, that's an average. We do look at it subdivision by subdivision. For each one of these new developments, we assign the ratio that we think is going to be applicable to that subdivision. But we look right now, some of your largest ones are a couple of mobile home communities of 1.18 and 1.1 students per home. Also, Crosby Estates is 1.03. But then on the smaller end, we've got Grace Timbers, Wildwood Lakes RV, and Roland Heights at .02, .03, .05 students per home. So it varies wildly, but you do need to understand that it's not two, and it's very rarely one. It's more than likely going to end up just for one a little bit there in those new homes. And then we developed three scenarios of growth: low, a moderate, and a high scenario of growth. And we would expect the district to probably use the moderate scenario of growth for most of the planning. We project for 10 years out. We know that the first five years of the projection period is going to be more reliable than the second five years, but it takes two years to go to high school, and you've got to pass the bond, and you've got to do all these things. So that's why we want to go ahead and look 10 years out. The moderate growth scenario, we would assume that interest rates don't really top 8% very much. We would assume that Crosby Farms and Sonova and Cedar Point, all of those get going within the next couple of years that we're talking about. And this also assumes that there would be no charter schools that come in and drop in the middle of the district, because of course, that can have a little bit of change. In the low scenario of growth, we would assume that your kindergarten perhaps doesn't grow quite as quickly as some of the other grades, because kindergarten has such an impact on how it works through the system. And also that we might see some decline in some of the older homes, these two homes already, and that we might have a charter school or one or more coming to the district. And then your high growth scenario, you know, it's very possible that that could happen, that you end up with kindergarten really coming in high, especially with a lot of new developments. At times that happens, people come in when they've got little tiny's that are at home, and that we might have some additional developments that we haven't expected to come online. And so you can see with those three scenarios of growth there, both at five years out and 10 years out. Like I mentioned, we would normally expect the district to use the moderate scenario of growth. And so what we've done is we've broken that out by gray bubble. And you can see that in the next five years, we'd be looking at about an addition of about 800 elementaries, about 500 middle school students, just under 400 high school students. And really, if we want to go ahead and look 10 years on and out, we could be looking at 2,800 more elementary kiddos, about 1,500 middle, and 1,400 added at the high school level. And so there's really big numbers for you guys, but everybody, like Angela mentioned, this is where you need to turn Darton and ready to go on. So can we answer any questions?
Good evening. I'm here to present to you tonight our demographic reality. As we look at our August 18 enrollment, which was last Friday, and the grade spans presented tonight, our EE through fifth grade, our enrollment count is 3,164. You can see our sixth through eighth grade, we're at 1,567, and then our ninth through 12th grade, we're at 2,096, for a grand total of our 6,827 students. And so you can see here the grade spans in relation to the demographic data that was presented previously. Looking a little bit more specific at our campuses, our building capacities, which are our functional capacities that we have here, and then compared to our enrollment, again, this is Friday's enrollment numbers compared to where we are, just wanted to note to everyone that our Newport Point, Newport Preserve, and our Sweetgrass communities have been zoned to Barrett Elementary. And so you can see where, as the communities bring on more students for the school year, we will see some increases there at that school.
I will recap for you the work of our community construction committee. So if we back up to last school year, as you're well aware, the committee recommended, and we are pursuing, the expansion of Crosby High School. And then the next prioritization would be the addition of the new middle school in phase one, and then a new elementary school with proposed bond funds. The most recent work of the community construction, the construction committee discussed district-wide maintenance and renovations. And within that, there were three specific areas that were discussed by the committee, and that was a look at roof replacement and refurbishment of various campuses, either in part or in whole throughout the district. Also restroom renovations at Crosby Elementary School and Crosby Middle School in specific locations of the building, with more need taking place at Crosby Middle School because of the age of the building. The HVAC equipment prioritization would be given to those buildings that have equipment that is 21 years plus old and is exceeding, is either good or is exceeding its functional life. So after the discussion of that, of that portion of the meeting, the construction committee was polled and voted in favor of moving forward with district-wide renovations and repairs.
So on the list of replacements is the old admin building? I thought we were all about some usual.
So the old admin building is actually, it actually has a newer roof on the major part of the administration building. It's the museum that is the smaller building next to it, that the roof is in pretty bad condition and has been recommended to be replaced because it's about to start to fall.
So would this be bonding to replace the roof on the piece that we've been out for one dollar?
Well, I would assume that that would be a discussion of the board, but with it being a district facility, it is in need of replacement.
Will those be, those particular projects be listed or in the bond proposal itself? Or would it be like various maintenance?
I think that it would be rotten.
So would there be anything that, I'm going to use the word control well, I think that's the right word, that would control that we use those funds on instructional facilities only? Would be open to whatever interpretation of what maintenance needs were?
Correct. It would be, it would be open to the interpretation of how the wording is written, and then discussion of what the district deemed to be the top priorities. And as Ms. Johnson just said, each of the projects would still go back to the board for final approval.
So this would be much like what we did when we counted, okay, 2017 bonds, what do we have, what are the priorities? You guys voted on the priority, and then we also voted on, we're going to start on the CHS project. So that's pretty much how the business is.
Ms. What did you, make sure I heard it correctly. Did you say that fair, I'm sorry, Ms. Lawrence? Did you state that Newport Point is...
Yes, sir.
You mentioned one more, which one was that?
Preserve. Preserve and Sweetgrass. Trying to go back.
So the proposed $85 million bond package will consist of $9.6 million for the new middle school number two, phase one. We have estimated construction cost of $55.2 for that particular campus, but we have $45.6 million remaining from the 2017 bonds that would be available. So that is what the difference is of the $9.6 million. The new elementary school number six would be $52.5 million, and our district-wide maintenance and renovations would be $22.9 million. So the sum of those numbers, 9.6, 52.5, and 22.9, make up the sum total of the $85 million that is the proposed bond election.
Let's briefly talk about board of trustee obligations for calling a bond election for this November. Tonight is your biggest obligation of approving the order of election to place the bond election on the ballot. Election day would be November 7th, when Crosby ISD voters will be asked to approve the bonds. And then the second obligation, the final obligation of the board in terms of the election, will be to canvass the vote by November 20th. This is a ceremonial function to officially accept the votes, and again, two trustees is sufficient in that case to constitute a quorum. So those, tonight and canvass the vote are the two obligations.
Another question, if you have any idea, which is this? Or you know, visible, visible. In the other study, they represent certain, is there a factor of the implications of the interest rates that has to simple and will influence construction?
No, I'm good. Okay. Yeah, certainly, we had that factor that we called, you know, it matters, we had only studied, but that goes to the housing, the size of the home, as it goes up. And so we consider, we also said, we decide whether you're coming and we choose their own company. And so the moderate goes in there, you know, sort of south, like, we can jump up, and we'd expect that to, the district can develop a little more, a little more, if it's moderate just a little bit, and we can have a lot of those. Yes, absolutely. You know, the developers will say, I'm going to put in this huge number of columns, but people still have to look at it.
I only had a question about the, well, assuming the $150 million a year taxable I agree that, looking at the chart, that appears conservative. And I know we're adding households, which is going to generate a lot of new income, but I feel like the last several years, the reason we've grown so incredibly much is simply based on, yes, we've been building, but it's largely been the increases every year in property, in individuals' existing homes. And I feel like that has to slow down in the next couple of years. That side of it absolutely has to slow down because the values are already unrealistic on a lot of people's properties. So I worry... So I worry if that side is slowing down, is the new growth of, can I make up enough for that? That is where, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm looking, yeah, I'm seeing the numbers, I'm looking at the yield. But that's with everybody's taxable value going up crazy every year. And like I said, I feel like that's about to hit its plateau. I don't see an acre land going past $100,000. It's already kind of flattened out and slowed down on people getting that much, which they were two years ago. So really confident on the 150, that's what I'm asking.
Well, that's a fair question. And the way that, as far as the implementation of when the bonds are sold, again, we're voting to approve the ability for the district to sell up to the 85 million. That is not to say that we have to come into January, February of 2024 and issue all 85 million. In fact, the timing of your construction projects is gonna span over the summer of '24 into the summer of '25 and beyond. So we can sell a portion of the bonds that we can buy with what the amount of bonds that you currently have on deposit, and a portion of the project. Then we go into the summer of 2024, having seen a new taxable value, a certified value from the variable district. And then before we enter with selling the next installment, whether that's a second and final, or a second and a third, or the next two summers, we'll have the ability to make any adjustments if we see that that 150 million is not planning to play out as projected. We do feel very, we do believe that we are being conservative, but we're also conservative on the interest rate too. So that if we have, you know, interest rates that are in the environment that they're in currently, and we're selling it closer to 4.25%, that means we don't necessarily need 150 million dollars of growth if we're borrowing at a lower cost. We sell the bonds over time. And you also do have built in, when we structured the last bond sale, we have our peak bond debt service payment currently this year. Would they drop going into the sale of anything that the voters would approve?
They like to say, I don't know. I try, and now first for you guys, I mean, y'all, since I've been here, y'all deliver constantly. So I just, like I said, that was on my mind, watching these values grow. And I know, like, I'm thinking of my own property. It's grown its max every year. But I know, I can't see that happening four more times because they'll lose, they'll lose my next, the next time I fight. That is what I'm saying, because it wouldn't make any sense. But great explanation.
Second thing, nine minutes before I have it.
Any more discussion, any more questions for anybody? I move to approve the Order of Calling a Bond Election in the amount of $85 million to be held by the Crosby Independent School District on November 7, 2023. It's been moved by Humphrey, seconded by Chapman, to approve the Order of Calling a Bond Election in the amount of $85 million to be held by the Crosby Independent School District on November 7, 2023. Any further discussion before we vote on it?
And not only, especially before we go to the voters, we need to find out how we're gonna spend almost $23 million and not say, we're gonna figure it out as we go. And that would build trust with them to say we have a plan.
As you presented it so far, it would say just district-wide maintenance and renovation, 23, 22.9 million?
And is it possible? I think that's the word. I keep stopping at possible additional projects. Like, if that's possible, what else is possible? I just think having that clear, to the voters, and build trust with them.
And you'll be, if they need some more? Oh, you're sticking with, okay. Okay, sticking with the, maybe the last part, okay? Any other discussion or questions?
I just think that it's important also to include that as much as you can, that the tax rates aren't falling out. That's gonna be huge for.
Yeah. Because we have to say great. We can't say taxes aren't falling out.
Right, we can't. I mean, that's something that was a big deal. And will be a big deal this time too.
For sure. For sure. All in favor, raise your hand. Oppose, abstain. Much in favor, 7-0. Here we go.
Okay, so we have a follow-up now that it has been approved at this point at 8:31 PM, August 21st. There are certain things we can and cannot do and if we can't now. And so Mr. Burke and I is going to go over that list of what to do and not do. Thank you, thanks. All right, Mr. Burke and I. And it's at the end of that same presentation.
Okay, as Superintendent Patterson just stated, the clock on the rules governing bond communication begins now. Board members, you're all receiving a packet from TASB entitled Campaign Speech During Elections. You have three pages that are highlighted in blue that pertain to board members and bond election communication. We wanted to share with you a few top-line questions and recommendations from TASB. So up here I have question one. May public funds be used to communicate anything about a bond election? Yes, public funds can pay for the dissemination of factual information, but not advocacy. And advocacy can be either for or against. So the district can communicate, but only factual information. Question two, may school board members and school employees advocate in favor of passing a bond election? Yes, but not if public funds are used in the advocacy. Please remember that you as board members can advocate as long as you're not using district resources. The rules for you as board members are not as strict as those limits placed on the role of superintendent of schools. Superintendent Patterson can only share factual information over the next two and a half months. She cannot advocate. You as board members are not under as tight of restrictions. You are good as long as you advocate on your own time, using your own resources. And that's question three. May board members use their own time and money to campaign in favor of the bonds? Yes, the Texas Ethics Commission states, although you may not use political subdivision resources for political advertising, you are free to campaign for or against a proposition on your own time with your own resources. Question four pertains to email. Bottom line, be cautious with email. TASB suggests using personal computers and your personal email accounts for communications. So the question is, does the prohibition on political advertising apply to emails sent to or from school district computers? No, but again, board members should be cautious using personal computers and personal email accounts for bond communications is what TASB suggests. Question five, if you engage in advocacy, you do not have to and you should not conceal that you are a member of the Board of Trustees. You can advocate as a board member, again, on your own time, using your own resources. So the question is, when using personal resources for political advocacy, does a school board member have to hide the fact that he or she is a sitting board member? No. When engaging in advocacy, using your own time or resources, a trustee need not conceal his or her position or claim to be acting as a private citizen. And there are a few more in the packets that we highlighted.